Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the November 14th Subcommittee Meeting. Just want to remind everyone that these meetings are taped and then shown on local cable. We'll get started with the three to four minutes.
Make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for October 10th of the regular meeting.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion for the other seven minutes?
Make a motion to approve the minutes for the executive session on October 10th, 2018.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great, we'll get started with student recognition awards, starting with Mr. Maha and Major Edwards.
Evening, everyone. Very happy to announce that Megan Flaherty has been selected by the fifth grade team as November Student of the Month. Megan is a conscientious student, putting forth more than 100% effort in everything she does. She is very personable and gets along well with her peers and always has a smile to share. Megan is an avid reader, already reading 21 books this school year. She volunteers in her time as a peer leader, plays flute in the fifth grade band as well. Outside of school, Megan enjoys playing sports and is a member of the town basketball, softball, and soccer team. She enjoys skiing in the winter with her family additionally. And Megan's positive attitude and work ethic make her a great choice for November Student of the Month. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So 21 books already since September?
Yeah.
What was your favorite one? Do you remember?
Um, Fish in a Tree.
Fish in a Tree. I don't know that one. Mr. Contesselli is shaking his head.
I'm waiting for the movie. What is Fish in a Tree? Well, it's Fish in a Tree. No, okay, then that one's gonna be a film.
So what do you like to read? What kinds of books?
I like to read realistic fiction.
Okay, well, that's good. And things at Major Edwards, you getting ready to come across the street with the other two over here?
Yeah.
Yeah? What are you most looking forward to?
Having my brothers and sisters in the same school.
You know what? Mom and Dad are looking forward to that, too. Everybody in one building, it's like so easier. Anybody in the committee have questions for Megan?
You're looking forward to ski season coming up?
Yeah.
Tomorrow?
We have some of the white stuff coming down pretty soon. What are you feeling about snow days, though? I know Dr. Schommer's right over there. I don't know, are you into snow days? Do you not like to make them up?
I don't like them because then we have to go to school at the end of the school year.
She'll make note of that for Friday morning. All right.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Meg. Good job. All right, Mr. Fornier.
Please welcome our middle school student of the month, Jonathan Jameson. Jonathan's teachers would like me to report that he goes above and beyond every day. He's an awesome role model for his peers. He played middle school soccer this year quite well, works hard in all of his subjects, and personally, I noted he was a real leader and superstar at Major's classroom. Other kids looked up to him, and he's just a very good citizen, and we're very proud of his accomplishment.
Hi, John.
Hello.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good. I want to add for the committee, just so they know, you also played football this fall. In addition to playing soccer for the school, you're also a very active scout, right?
Yes.
And how'd the first term of school go? Was it well, can I assume?
Yeah.
Yeah, are you liking it over here?
Yep.
Yeah, what do you like best?
Freedom.
You know what? Matthew says the same thing. No offense, Mr. Maha, but you like being able to walk to lunch, not in a line, and being able to kind of do your own thing a little bit. Yep, I got it, I know how that feels. You know what I also want to say, just so the committee knows, this year's middle school soccer team, it was a rough season, and John was in goal, and he never quit. Even when he was getting a lot of shots taken on him, he worked hard, and he had a good attitude, and he was a good teammate. So that really says something about you, not just about your academic self, but about you as a person. You were a good teammate, so that was nice to see, too. You guys have questions for John?
Well, I had the pleasure of seeing you on the football field, and I know you're a leader on your team, and I think that translates really well to the classroom, and hearing those great words from Mr. Fornier about Major's classroom, and how other students look to you for leadership. You're a role model, and that's awesome. So thank you, you're a valued member of the West Wilson Public Schools, and having you here, so congratulations.
Thank you.
If you want to ask, you're obviously sixth grader. What's your favorite class?
Science.
Nice.
What's your nickname? What's your nickname?
Mr. Walker.
Mr. Walker.
J.J.
J.J. Watts?
Jonathan Jameson. All right. Good job.
And we're pleased to welcome the high school student of the month, Griffin Achea. So I have a lot of things to say about Griffin, being a senior and having had a chance to know him since his freshman year. He recently won a scholarship to WPI for his placement at a math meet, a math competition, and he received a thousand-dollar scholarship because he did so well, which Mr. Swenson is very proud of. He's a starting goalie for the West Wilson Tejantos Boys Soccer Team, led his team into the playoffs. He's in the top three of his class here at the West Wilson High School. Very strong leader, good citizen, athlete, loves to read science fiction, likes Star Wars, so I like him because he loves Star Wars. He had an internship in our main office last year, and I mean, he was between he and Miss Larrion. I didn't even have to come to school some days, it just had this place running really smoothly. We will miss him as he heads off to college, but not as much as his mother will. He's got a great attitude, and his honors English, AP English teacher wanted me to say that. He enjoys reading challenging works of literature, sharing keen insights in class discussions. He speaks deliberately, logically, and with conviction, is a positive spirit, and did a very memorable impersonation, including costume and prop for Jeffrey Schausser's Partner's Tale during their study of the medieval period, of the Canterbury Tales, and he's very receptive to suggestions and writing conferences. So congratulations, Griffin, on all your hard work.
Hi, Griffin.
Hi.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I love that I give all three of these kids tonight, it's so nice. So I know you applied early decision, right? Early action?
Early action.
To WPI?
Yes.
All right, so we're waiting here back on that. Where else have we applied or are we applying?
Just there so far.
That's it, huh? I know that's the top, right?
Mid-December.
Okay, all right. I'm pretty sure we'll be talking to you about that again, I have a feeling that's going to be a good thing. One thing that I want to add to about Griffin for anybody who doesn't know, he is just a great kid in that he was a tutor for my son last year in math. And Cameron ended up doing very well in math, and I think a lot of it was that Griffin is patient and kind, and he sat with him and went over problems and homework and really helped him understand the things that he was missing in class. So to be able to sit down with a younger student and help them that way takes a special kind of personality. So I thank you as a mom for that, because math is a struggle, and you made it easy. So that was really nice, and I appreciate that, how you do.
Thank you.
You're welcome. You guys, do you have anything to add to that?
Well, I have something to say.
Oh, yes, sure.
I've known Griffin for how many years now? Probably since you were five, he was old, playing sports with Ricky, and enjoyed coaching you, and you've always been very respectful and a good athlete, and I'm really proud of you, happy for you. WPI is a great school, I bet you better increase that thousand-dollar. Hopefully they'll give you a little bit more. Now, the other thing I have to say is, I'm really impressed if I'm correct here, that that was Mr. Gustafson that said all those nice things about English to you?
Yes.
Because that's a tough thing to get out of him. From my experience, he doesn't give out compliments like that to students very often, so you should be very proud of that, too.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Thank you, parents, and I know it's very exciting to come to the school committee meeting, but at this point, if you would all like to go home, we're going to talk about all the business of the district. You are welcome to stay, but we won't be offended if you would like to go. So thank you so much for coming, thank you all. Thank you all for your work.
But if you leave, you're gonna miss a lot of good stuff.
All right. Student council, Caitlin, how are you?
So the football team? The football team lost playoffs against Leicester 7-6 a few weeks ago. The girls' soccer team lost their first district game against Quebok after that. And boy soccer, they lost to Hudson 7-1. The golf team, Sean McGarian went to districts, and he did pretty well. For clubs, student council, the fall conference was really successful, everyone really enjoyed it. It was held at Tejantos, and student council is currently putting together care packages for soldiers, or that's something they're going to be working on. National Honor Society is collecting cans for the turkey gaggle, and the Easter seal shootout is this Thursday after school, so tomorrow. National Art Honor Society hosted paint night a few weeks ago, and it was really successful, and they gave half the proceeds to Marie's Mission. And they've decided to paint mugs instead of plates at clay time, and they're currently working on drawings for another calendar fundraiser. Triumph has put up sign-ups for Coffee House, and the performances are now limited to five minutes, just because last year there was an issue with it going for a long time. The Wellness Club is currently spreading awareness about diabetes and smoking prevention, that's what they're focused on in November. And this week and next week, or the week after Thanksgiving, is mainly focused on diabetes awareness. And then the Interact Club is helping in a homeless backpack drive this Sunday, and they're going to be helping with a senior breakfast on December 8th.
Just want to go ahead and thank the camera crew tonight, thank you for coming, we appreciate your time, and thank you to any of the keeping the minutes for us, we appreciate your time as well.
And I also just want to say how nice the setup is here. I want to thank Eric and the custodians for getting all this set up for us, especially the new system for the microphones that have no wires anymore, so it's a much more delightful look to our set here. I have put in your packet the MCAS report, and it's given to you in two sections. The first section is the context for the MCAS test, and I give you that context, because as you know, the test changed. Over the past few years, we've seen a lot of iterations of the test, and you know, a different test, the PARC, and now we're back to the MCAS 2.0. This is the second year that we've given the MCAS 2.0. So I gave you all of the state data that's available for the MCAS 2.0, and then starting on page 28, I've given you our district data. And there are really no surprises in that data, we're still hovering just above the state average. What we have seen, which is what pretty much everyone statewide has seen, is that there, from the last MCAS test to the new MCAS test, what's happened is there are fewer students on the outliers, so fewer students in the not meeting expectations category, and fewer students in the exceeding expectations category, and more students kind of filling up those two middle sections. And if you look back into the background data that I gave you from the commissioner, that was purposeful, and it was in order to make the test look more like the national tests that we give, the NAEP tests that we give, because our state wants the MCAS to be a predictor of how we will do on the NAEP, so that we're measuring ourselves not only against our own high standards, but against national standards. You have the reports from me that are for the combined grades three through eight, and then you have the reports that are for grades nine through 12. And the reason you can't get it as one report is because they're not the same tests that are given. The way that you can tell that is that the newer test has the blue, green, orange, red bars for the data, and the other test has just the two colors, blue and the red data. I tried to present for you in this report some of the issues that we're dealing with as a district, and in general, I could classify it this way, and you can see it all over the data. We do very well with our students, all of our aggregate students, and with students who don't have disabilities. We do less well with students that have disabilities, and we're working on that. So that's the message I want you to have, but we're still above the state average there, you know, pretty good over the state average, but not as good as we want to be. The other category that we actually do pretty well in, I wanted you to see, which is a category that's called high needs, and that includes students with disabilities, students with English language learning needs, students who live in poverty or count as being in poverty. And we actually do very well with that group of students when you take them all together. Again, we're at the top or above the state average for those groups, too. I would take any questions you have, but I don't really want to bore you with just the... I wanted you to have the report, but it's hard to make too much sense of a test that you've only given for two years as far as longitudinal data or anything. Suffice it to say that we're sitting just right above the state average and working hard to improve that.
Do you want to point on using the MCAS 2.0 for temporary?
Yeah, this is the last class that's going to take the, what they're calling the legacy? Yeah, the legacy MCAS, and that's because it's written into the state law.
So this school year's test?
Yes.
Will you use it?
This 10th grade?
Everybody?
Yeah. No, 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 this year takes the legacy test still. This is the last year. It might even be 2020.
I think they said 2019, the Western schools, 2.0 computer-based test, by 2020, it'll be.
Everybody.
Now, is the science even for three through eight the old one?
Yes, that's why I got the blue, the red and blue data, that's, yeah. So we're still giving the legacy MCAS test for science. There is also a test in the works for our U.S. history. 2020, they're saying 2020, 2021. And, oh, I should also say, I'm giving you just the overall district big picture results. Next month, you'll get a report from both principals with the very, all that really minute school-level data and their plans to address that.
I'll say this again, I've said this several times, I've looked at the MCAS over the last 10 years, and I understood it. I got to a point where I understood it, I understood where we were going. I'm looking at this, and it is, doesn't give me one iota of how our school's doing.
It's starting all over again. We're starting all over again.
I look at it, actually, I look at it and say, boy, we're not doing so well. That's how I see it.
Yeah, well, because they change.
By looking at all of it as colors.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And I'm saying, jeez, I thought we were better.
Right, but you can see the state, I mean, that's how, they did change the, they did change the look of things. So, you know, over the years that we gave the legacy MCAS test, you saw the data for everybody improve. The state's data improved, everybody's data improved. So you get to a point where there's not really much more you can do to improve, right?
Because of the growth factor.
Yeah, so then, so this is what they do, they come up with a new test, and they reset the bar. So this is the resetting of the bar, it's really moved everybody more towards the middle, and every single year, they, you know, they come up with the way that they're going to score it, what the cut scores are, it really is a moving target. That's why I like to emphasize the comparison to the state average, because that's going to always give you a picture of your community that's relative to something, you know, that we can all understand.
It doesn't?
I know, it's not a lot of data, Rick, I know, I'm sorry, it's two years.
It's been a while.
No, I know, I know.
It doesn't?
I know, it was better before. You'll, but you'll get, well...
You could dig down into the weeds and really see it.
Well, you will, next month, yeah, next month you'll get.
You couldn't even see it.
You could, yes, you're absolutely right, you're absolutely right, I know. It's only two years, and it's...
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, the legacy test was pretty good before I graduated.
Yes, of course.
It was a great 10, I was a goodness.
Yeah.
Advanced, advanced, and significantly above the state.
Right, yeah, very good, yes.
I mean, I could figure that out.
Yeah, well, and that's that other test, right? So we gave it for a long time, right?
It's also...
That's awful.
That's okay, you're here. Community input? All right, we have a couple warrants that need approval, so somebody make a motion on the list, please.
I'll make a motion for the approval, sorry, the approval of payroll warrants dated October 15th, 2018, October 29th, 2018, and November 13th, 2018.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Any questions? Any further explanation necessary? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Communication reports, Mr. Maha?
Hello.
I'm sorry, I apologize. Hold that thought for a second, I'm just waiting.
So we met briefly before the meeting, we're through to inviting our legislatures, Harry Chandler and General Data, meet with us in a future legislation meeting.
Any particular issues you're looking to discuss with them?
Nothing very specific, more future-type things that might be growing as far as all the studies we're doing, the school studies.
Is that ready, guys?
Yes.
Mr. Maha?
Tuesday last week, Karen and Bernie from the Wilson Language Foundation spent the day at the building, working with the grade two staff on their implementation of foundations, and also two additional staff were receiving their Wilson credentials this year. Conferences are next Monday and Tuesday, and dismissal will be at 11:25 on both of those days. Staff have begun the initial review of budget items for the FY of 20 budgets, so that is underway now. Also, our first round of RTI concluded last week, and with that, our greeting specialist brought the grade level teachers to assess and gauge the success of greeting interventions and things that can be adjusted before the second round begins. And Major Edwards also said farewell to a positive presence in the building over the last couple of years, as our regular sub, Darryl Nettow, moved to Florida about 10 days ago, and Darryl lived in the building about three years, and is really out of warm, and comforting presence to a lot of the kids there and his staff as well, so we wish him well as he relocates. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Fornier?
Thank you very much. As you probably know, having children at the school, our first-term report cards were issued last Friday. And this week, at the middle school level, we have parent-teacher conferences happening, both after school and tomorrow evening. These conferences for the second consecutive year have been conducted by the teams, appointments being made at times, they can meet with the families, we've had some during the school day, some immediately after school, and then of course, some in the evenings, and it's going very well, and that's been done. The middle school, after-school homework club resumed to start term two, Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays. Teachers obviously are staying to help students, but students can then also get some help from play clubs in the cafeteria and in the library, and that has been well attended and very helpful to supervision of the students after school while they're waiting for a class. Students who are signing up to go on the grade nine trip to Washington, DC, and their great teacher to New York City have participated in the Yankee Candle Drive, they did about $10,000 of Yankee Candle sales, and 40% of the funds goes towards the kids' trips, so it was a very successful fundraiser. The deadlines for those two trips are approaching, with Washington, DC closing on Friday, and New York's registration closing on December 14th. As Caitlin mentioned, several of the teams made it into the postseason, none of them advanced to the finals this year, but very proud of our teams and of our athletes, and hopefully, football's getting a bit on Thanksgiving, which will put a wrap on the fall season, and a 10-1 record is certainly not going to feel bad for them, they did a great job this year. Girls' cheerleading squad competed at the districts, they've been there at the regionals, and placed second in both of those competitions. They did an outstanding job. Now they'll commence with cheering for basketball, as they cheer for Thanksgiving Day game, and you know, two days off, and then they already cheer the best. We're collecting foods for our Thanksgiving turkey drive. Chief Mitch is donating turkeys, and each of the grade six to 12 are donating food so that we get to provide a full meal for 20 or so families in the community, families to sign up for participation in that meal, working with basically the organization, the folks over at the elementary school, so a partnership with... Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Correa?
Thank you very much. As you probably know, having children at the school, our first term report cards were issued last Friday. And this week at the middle school level, we have parent-teacher conferences happening, both after school and tomorrow evening. These conferences for the second, for the second year have been conducted by the teams. Appointment's being made at times, they can meet with the families. We've had some during the school day, some immediately after school, and then of course, some in the evenings. And it's going very well and not been done. The middle school, after-school homework club resumed to start term two. Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays. Teachers obviously are staying to help students, but students can then also get some help from play clubs in the cafeteria and in the library. And that has been well attended and very helpful to supervision of the students after school while they're waiting for a class. Students who are signing up to go on the grade nine trip to Washington DC and their great teacher to New York City have participated in Yankee Candle Drive. They did about $10,000 of Yankee Candle sales. And forty percent of the funds goes towards the kids' trips. So it's a very successful fundraiser. The deadlines for those two trips are approaching. With Washington DC closing on Friday and New York's registration closing on December fourteenth. As Caitlin mentioned, several of the teams made it into the postseason. None of them advanced to the finals this year. But very proud of our, of our teams and of our athletes. Hopefully football's getting a bit on Thanksgiving, which will put a wrap on the postseason. And a ten-one record is certainly not gonna feel bad for them. They did a great job this year. Girls' cheerleading squad competed at the districts, they've been in the regionals and placed second in both of those competitions. They did an outstanding job. Now they'll commence with cheering for basketball as they cheer for Thanksgiving Day game. You know, two days off and then they already cheer the best. We're collecting foods for our Thanksgiving turkey drive. Chief Mitch is donating turkeys and each of the grade six to twelve are donating food so that we get to provide a full meal for twenty or so families in the community. Families to sign up for participation in that meal. Working with basically four, and the folks over at the elementary school. So partnership with folks signing up at Richard School and then both of us contribute to baskets which are then delivered to families in the community. And so forth, we've done it and it's been very well received. The kids voted for it. And last Friday, we had a distracted driver presentation, which the DA's office put together for us. It also accompanied a week of distracted driver simulation. There's a special vehicle that comes in and kids go in there and it's a virtual reality. Get to see how hard it is to drive and text and drive and talk, drive and be distracted by your friends in the backseat. So it was a, it was a good week for raising awareness as more and more of our sophomores and juniors and seniors get their licenses and drive themselves to school, so. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, Mrs. Trine, can you run it for us?
I do.
Oh my goodness.
You can't have my time. I do. Actually, believe it or not, we have begun accepting applications for the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty preschool program already.
Is this early at the moment?
Yep.
Okay.
So a little bit later. We pushed things back a little bit just because of the holidays. So we will be having, all the information is up on the school website as well as Mr. Maha had sent to our school a message out as well. It will be in the local paper, but we'll be having an open house on Wednesday, November twenty-eighth, from one to two, at Major Edwards and the preschool classrooms. We are already starting to accept applications for the lottery. We will continue to collect those until Friday, January fourth, with the lottery being on Wednesday, January ninth. So we are in the process. If anybody needs any information, it is on the website or they can call my office. Assistant Gina and I are coordinating the applications to share in the lottery. So both can pass through.
Thank you very much. Uh, Mr. Hopfire?
You have an expenditure report for the month of October. As of the end of the reporting period for October, we do have a couple of negatives that we've recognized on the EFD as far as the balance. On the bottom is positive and in black, we're in good condition. Have a couple of transitions that we're still making for staff and so forth. We have a lot of maternity leaves, a few out there, a few medical leaves that's a reasoning on the teacher account and we're keeping an eye on that, we'll watch it. But other than that, we're still positive balance on the, on the bottom for available funding, which is fine.
What about on the transportation services?
That is because we, one of our groups that we normally have been doing ourselves, we put that back onto the, to the vendor out there. And that's the difference. We'll make that up through, through, through our account. Yeah, that was the transition for one of our groups that we've been doing ourselves. You can see the savings that's.
Savings for us having those vans is significant. Town should be very grateful we left us those.
So if there are any other questions on the expenditure report?
No.
We also have to vote, or not vote, it's the committee's decision to come to that point again. We've, since we're three years since we last voted a bus transportation contract. And we have the option in there to extend that for another two to three years at our short, at our, at our will only. Okay, so that's in, it's on to us. I put it in, I put it in your package, I apologize, it should have been in your package, but didn't go up in the package. Or it was just a little explanation of what we're actually funding right now. We've done three years, okay? Basically, we, it's pretty basic, we run five bus routes out there. The bus route started in year one of this contract at three thirty-nine per bus per year, okay? For a bus per day, okay? Then they went to three forty-nine, then they went to three fifty-nine. Those are our first three years that we, that we, that will be completed. We're asking if we do extend it, okay? You can see the rates that what's gonna happen in year four and year five. There is a pretty good jump in year four. Year four, it's a six-point-one percent jump. It's nineteen thousand eight hundred dollars. Year five would be a four-point-seven percent jump or sixteen thousand two hundred. That is substantially greater than the first three years. But that's the way these contracts work and the vendors apply them. They put it light in the first three years and then heavy in the last two so that you want to do it. Our case here, I looked at it over five years, okay? We look at it from the three forty-nine that we had in year, excuse me, three thirty-nine that we had in year one to the two ninety-nine, three ninety-nine that we would be paying in year five. What's the difference, okay? The difference in that case was eighteen percent over five years or three-point-six percent per year. That's more reasonable than the last two jumps that we had. The first three years, it jumped two-point-nine each year. The last two was heavy, okay? Overall, three-point-six per year, alright. Other question is, okay, before I get into the specialties, that's just for the five routes that we run. We run five routes. Don't have a lot of leverage out there. Don't have a lot of bidders that come to the door to bid, okay? Looking around, what's going on around us. I explained, I explained this to you guys before, this is the second time I've done this. I'm saying, I've been here, I can't wait, I've been here that long, this is the second time around. Anyhow, what do we have around us up there? Everybody around us is in the low four hundreds for next year, okay? My closest, what you said, is at four hundred and sixty-six. We're at, we're gonna be at four eighty-one.
Three, three.
I don't know if the economics are because their routes are a lot longer than ours or whatever. But it's still telling you, everybody is high at this. So it's probably a good buy to say we'll take two more years out of it. Or if we go out, not knowing, but then everything all comes up.
They could restructure us.
They could restructure the whole thing. We have a fix. And even though it's, it's a six-point, the first year's a six-point-one, it's only, it's nineteen thousand dollars. Second year's four-point-seven, it's sixteen thousand dollars total for the year to run our five routes that we run. Where it gets a little higher, okay, is in the activities that we push out through. We have subsidized some of this because we give some of the buses, long start. We run a late bus every day. That late bus currently, right now, costs us fifty-five dollars a day to run that late bus. Best buy you're ever gonna get, I can tell you that right now. They come three times a week, pick up our kids, bring them, you know, to set locations out there for fifty-five dollars a day. That's gonna go to seventy-five dollars a day. So it's, that really is, it's a two-thousand-dollar, twenty-two-hundred-dollar increase over the course of a hundred, three days a week we run it or a hundred and eight days. But it's thirty-six percent jump, so that's a lot. But still, the buyer that we're getting right now, fifty-five dollars for that bus to show up and take, it takes quite a several kids.
I can't even get a trip to the movies for us in two thousand nine.
Right, you know, but it's, and that bus has quite a few kids on it every day because they're all sitting outside our office now and they're, until they get called out. So we know that, that's, that's a good buy. Let's keep, you know, we'll stay, we'll stay with that. Athletics pushes up a little bit. If you're looking at, we, it's divided off into three areas, okay? Mileage rate, uh, the mileage rate for the, for the buses out there, the minimum charge and the driving waiting time. Three items, okay? First item, the mileage rate is going up a little over six percent. Second item, the drive waiting time is going up ten bucks, so that's fifteen percent. The third item is the minimum charge, which we had our discussions before, we'll have them again, I assure you. That's going up eight-point-six percent to three hundred and eighty dollars. So that's on the athletics. What do we spend on athletics in total for the year, about fifty-two thousand dollars? Which is what we spent last year. Can't tell you what we're gonna end up with this year, but last year it was fifty, it was fifty-two thousand. Total. We also have the acidic bus that we run as a third component to this. That's, he's doing a straight ten percent on that. Goes from sixty-two, eight-twenty by year to sixty-nine, one-twenty, and that's a ten percent increase.
Do we need a big bus for us next year?
We will for.
This year.
One more year.
This year.
This current year.
Right. This current year, so going into school year nineteen twenty, which is.
It's gonna swap around.
We're gonna need the big bus to a Leominster.
Exactly.
Okay, so we still have to pay for a big bus.
Yellow bus, for, for those of you, our yellow bus, our little yellow bus.
Functional.
It's functional, it's on the road, we have our drivers, we have our licensed, we're, we're been running that right now. That will switch around, those buses will switch around.
And that's what we're asking about.
We're gonna be on the capacity of that little yellow bus.
Going to Leominster.
But it should be all right, 'cause it'll be up a way to acid.
Right.
That was our intention when we get into this process. Late bus now is available for activities and so forth and so on, and it gets used.
All the time.
Pretty much.
That's because clubs and groups and whatever are in court to get a bus.
It's a lot easier. If you only have, you know, five, six, seven kids, it's the easiest thing to do. And that's what we do. So that kind of gives you a brief outline, I didn't really wanna, I suppose it's important to, because of the funding that we're gonna do for two more years, to, to go through it in pretty much detail, but.
Roger, is any of this negotiable?
No.
So you can't go back to them and negotiate any of this?
We signed on to, he put these, that's why we have him bid those amounts in there.
Well, it's our option.
It's our option.
It's our option, and so.
We walk away from it, nobody else bid this contract.
No, I know.
Roger, would you say it's a fair assumption that seeing how there are not a lot of people that would bid on it, that no one, this company's not gonna come back at less than this? When we already have this option, so it'd be most likely more.
Mm-hmm, just put, because of the current market conditions around us right now. And as I say, two times we bid it out, or, you know, I mean, the one time that I bid it out, you can only use the envelope on the table for one, one time. Then, then the gentleman catches on, so.
But I mean, Wachusett and Tohato are regional districts, so don't they get some of their transportation money back from the state?
They get food, right, exactly.
So we can say they're getting charged more by the bus company, but some of that money is brought in from the state.
Yeah, they get seventy-three percent, seventy-six percent, seventy-seven percent.
So.
We don't, any, any non-regional, any county or cities don't get, don't get funding for transportation other than our vocational transportation, which we do.
Right, a little bit.
Little, right.
Right.
But that's, that's the options for you as to, um.
I don't know, we don't really have any options.
You're limited, our leverage is limited. As I said, I've used the envelope on the table so many times and that's it. And we have to roll the business out there. And, and I don't know if there's anybody else.
It's unfortunate, and I think that, you know, it would be nice if we could shop around, but we don't have anybody who's looking to do business with us and honestly.
We have, it is.
I'd like to find another one, but.
At least you're looking at five buses. There's some control on how much that can increase. Wachusett's got fifty buses. If you want ten percent of fifty buses, I mean, it's astronomical.
Right, but again, the state's kicking in for a lot of their transportation costs. We're, we're paying ours out of our budget.
I actually joked with my colleague at Wachusett, when I asked him for his rate for next year for regular transportation, and he gave you the four sixty-six on it. And then he gave you the toll, I saw the totals that they have, the routes that they run.
Absurd.
Fifty, I think it was fifty-one, fifty-three, I joked with him, I said, you could probably pick up our kids, you can, you can know it.
Can you work that? Can you work that out?
Yeah, that's, it's.
So basically, the end of the life of this contract in two years. We're gonna go out for a bid.
We're gonna be going on to, you know, no, no.
Year, year, year from now.
We'll be putting together the wealth, but we can lock it in.
Well, I have to say, last time, we kind of walked into that same scenario where we saw everybody else's bid, and they still came in pretty low for us. So it's still may, it, it's probably gonna be more than what we see in front of us, but it probably's gonna be less than those others again.
For the first three years. Having two nine years. The first three years having two nine increases was pretty good, that was low. Those three years were low. Ends it up, but overall, three-six a year, so. With the cost of insurance, fuel, and, and I said, we get a fuel adjustment in this, so don't weigh that into it 'cause it'll adjust it. There is a little bit of swing developed for him that he needs to cover, but other than that, it's a major adjustment. We covered, and we're, if you look at it on the front page, it says option B, fuel adjustment, that's what we did. So your thoughts, your comments, your motion if you wanna extend the two years?
Well, I'll make a motion that we extend the two years under the current contract arrangement that Roger's laid out for us. Second?
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Roger, for all your work on it.
Two more years.
Captain Sharper?
Yes, you have my report, I'll give you the typical SD information about attendance, student attendance, suspension data. I wanted to highlight tonight the fact that we've started our budget development and wanna thank Rich Maha and Paige Paquette from my office for helping me this year with the initial preparation of the documents that we use for budgeting. It's pretty tedious, time-consuming work, and I appreciate having you in that and having colleagues to talk about that. We finished that and we wrapped that up just today and forwarded the budget request forms to principals who have communicated with their staff members who need to work on those budgets. So the way that we do it here, it's very bottom-up. You know, we ask people in classrooms, what do you need to do your best work? They put forward their list, it all gets collected on documents, and then principals go through the documents first and approve what they think warrants approval and, you know, modify or reject what they think doesn't. And then those documents come to me at the end of December and early January. I go through those and I do the same thing the principals did. And we come to a final number of an initial budget that we bring to the budget subcommittee in February. And then, as you know, every year, the budget subcommittee meets multiple times between February and the public hearing of the budget, which is March school committee, or just before the March school committee meeting. And then the ball goes well, we, we bring it to town meeting and see, see where we end up this year. But we've started that process. The other thing I wanted to just give you information about, because I'm not sure it's information that we talk about every day, but it's very important. Last year, Governor Baker signed into law the Look Act. And it's a, it's an act that is meant to help school districts deal in effective ways with students that they have whose first language is not English. So I tried to lay out some of the things that are required under that law and some of the ways that we're reacting to that in, in our district. I did want you to also see the list, 'cause I think you'll be surprised by the list of languages that are spoken by families in our district right now. Yeah, we have six languages besides English that are spoken in our district. And right now, we are communicating with families in those languages on a regular basis. We do have in each building a designated staff member who is licensed to work with students with English language learning needs. At the elementary school, Denise Lebec does that full-time. And here at the middle high school, our, one of our speech therapists does that work part-time. About point five of her schedule is dedicated to working with students with English language learning needs. This is a growing issue for us. We, we don't have as many services as other districts because we're smaller, but our need is becoming greater. You know, helping students with six different languages means that we very rarely have somebody who can speak their language. And we, we hire interpreters to come and help parents when we have meetings for those students or when they request it. We do translate, translations on a regular basis to help families get along. We're fortunate that our foreign language staff, some of them are multilingual and they can help with Spanish or Portuguese translation. But, you know, we have kids who are speaking Twi, Wajirati, Arabic, Albanian, and we don't have people who can do that, so we have to hire those people. I, I can give you more data, more information about the number of students that we have, but it's grown every single year. When I started here, I think there were three students. Last year, there were fourteen, I haven't counted this year, but it's a lot of students. So I, I wanted to just let you know that that's work that's ongoing and it's really happening for us. It's something we have to respond to, and we have to respond in significant ways to help those families. The other thing that we have, which is just a little surprise blast from the past, is the final report from a project that started in two thousand eleven. It actually started before I came on board here. I think you took your vote to do it before I came on board and then I, I kinda saw it, I was here when it started. But it was the repair project for the, the green repair of the windows and doors at Major Edwards Elementary School. And we just got the final report a few days before. And we just got the final report a few days before your packet went out, so I, November 5th actually, so I gave you the final copy of that report. So I'll go right to that.
Mr. Conqueror, anything?
No.
Mr. Don, Mr. Shaw?
Other than the, my, we got approval for, through the Rotary for $2,400 to help the kids at Gump Hady. And so Rotary locally will be donating $2,400 as a matching program to the kids, which I think is, they did that last time and I'm going to do it again.
Okay, you're scheduled to go in April, right?
We'll be advertising fundraiser. One afternoon, that's what it is. The kids will be excited to roll out, hopefully.
And, can I for you, Mr. Shaw?
Yes, sir.
I just want to put a reminder out there to the community that administrators are always available for conversations or discussions and solving problems on social media is generally not the way to go. So if parents have questions, concerns, or commentary, I would encourage people to contact administrators directly instead of trying to solve problems on a list of neighbors connect.
Indoor school committee members?
Indoor school committee members. So, yeah, we're all generally available, so I encourage that route versus the other. Other than that, can we, I just had to, well, am I asking?
Yeah, there's a...
Okay, there is a moment, okay. So we all just received copies of the evaluation for Dr. Sharper. Everyone filled out their evaluation. I compiled the data, put together our final report, and we have that in front of us now. So...
I make a motion to approve the evaluation for Dr. Shaw for Mrs. FY-18. I'll second that.
Any discussion, questions, comments?
I have a question.
Question.
I had sought some verification with Dr. Shaw regarding improvement goals and to step on the evaluation process. I'm wondering, I guess, to you, how do we go about gauging that when...
Well, the goals that you're, yeah, the goals that you're, these are the goals that you have to evaluate me on based on the, based on what was provided in the information. The packet that I gave you contained information about what I did for each of the district improvement goals. I put it under the categories in which it would have occurred. Yeah. I want to say something about that because I give, I make district improvement goals very lofty goals and a lot of them. Most people that I work with or who are in my position have a professional practice goal, a student learning goal, and maybe one or two district goals. I like to work off of a more robust plan, but those overlap with the other categories, instructional, leadership, management, and operations. And so the guidance that I got was that it would be better placed to report on those in those categories. But you know what's on the district improvement goals because you approved that plan. So, I mean, if you have any doubt about whether I completed those or not, that's, you can always ask, or I can give you some data in a different way, but it would be the same data.
Mr. Shaw?
I'm very happy with Dr. Shaw.
We have a, we have a motion. Do you want to second?
I don't, the overall results?
I don't think we ran one to any... You want to? Sure, okay. That's fine.
So overall, the rating was proficient with a high level of student, high impact student.
Mm-hmm. All right. So we have a motion.
I'll second.
Okay.
Yeah.
37, okay.
We're discussing, we're just going to go.
All right. Paul, listen favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any other business? Motion to adjourn? Second? Paul, listen favor? Aye.